Good evening. Welcome to the September Work Session for the City of Hiram Council. Pastor McGrady?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we begin, I would say we ask that you have your cellphones on, off on, vibrating before we start. Let's pray. Father, now in Jesus' name, we thank you as always. We bless you for our life, health, and strength. We thank you, God, that you kept us to this point in this time in our life. And, Father, we say thank you for these elected and appointed officials. Father, that your wisdom, your knowledge will lead them in guide. We thank you, Father. We bless you. In Jesus' name I pray. Pray, believe it. Amen.
Amen.
Let's all stand.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cliff. We have a proclamation tonight for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Dr. Melton?
Doc.
Dr. Melton. This is Dr. Melton with Shepherd's Rest. Whereas October is recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and the Council of the City of Hiram is committed to the safety and justice for battered women and children in this community; and whereas the Council recognizes that Shepherd's Rest Ministries, Inc., Safe House and Services for Battered Women and Children, have provided shelter and services for battered women and children since 1997, and continues to serve the needs of the domestic violence victims in the county; and whereas the Council recognizes that it will take a community effort to stop violence against women and children; and that Shepherd's Rest Ministries is committed to educating the community on the complex issues of violence against women and children; and whereas the Council is committed to the formation of a seamless network of support for the victim and a seamless network of accountability of the perpetrator, we acknowledge that through community education and intervention, domestic violence will become an unthinkable crime in our community; and whereas the Council encourages the community residents to educate themselves about these issues and work to make the city of Hiram violence free. Now, therefore, I Frank Moran, Mayor of the City of Hiram, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Hiram.
No countdown.
I have no countdown. Yeah, usually, we have a countdown.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now, the event of the evening. Mayor and Council recognize Elementary School Citizenship Award recipients. Principal Black?
Good evening, everyone. We would like to once again thank Hiram City Council for allowing us the opportunity to celebrate and recognize our amazing Hiram Hornets. This is year four, and we are happy to continue the tradition that was started, and we appreciate it very much. We're going to start with kindergarten. This student is a standout recipient of the Kindergarten Citizenship Award due to her remarkable kindness, responsibility, and respect in our classroom. She arrives each morning with a smile on her face and is excited to start her day. She shares her materials, offers comfort to those in need, and participates in all classroom activities. Her positive attitude, respect for others, and commitment to following rules makes her a role model for her friends. Her caring nature truly embodies the values of good citizenship, and we are delighted to celebrate her at the city council meeting. Congratulations to Miss Ivana Zavala.
There'll be time for parents to come up and take it.
Our next is first grade. This first grader demonstrates what being a good citizen looks like daily in a variety of ways. She is compassionate and helpful to her fellow students. She greets these opportunities with a smile and lots of encouragement. The level of respect shown to her teachers goes above and beyond what is expected. Her positive attitude is contagious to all of those around her, and she never shies away from a new challenge presented to her. She takes pride in her school as well as in her classroom. She is a great, excuse me, she is an awesome Hiram Hornet, and it shows daily. Congratulations to Seven Law. This second grader is a shining example of a good citizen in the classroom and school. He is helpful to his classmates, and his respect towards teachers makes a positive impact every day. He loves learning and always works hard. He comes to school every day with a smile on his face. He is always happy to clean up after himself and others to keep our school clean. He is a great example of what it means to be a good citizen. Congratulations to Devon Benson. This third grader demonstrates excellent citizenship characteristics in our classroom. She always follows directions and listens to her teachers. She is also very trustworthy and helpful to her teachers. She sets a great example by always having a positive attitude. She is a role model to her peers, and she is kind and compassionate to others. She loves to help her classmates when they need it. Not only does this student always do the right thing, but she encourages others to do the right thing as well. She has demonstrated these characteristics every day since the first day of school. She is a perfect example for citizenship. Congratulations to Kalani Banks. This fourth grade student has been selected for the citizenship award for many reasons. He has shown exceptional qualities of good citizenship through his actions and involvement in our school and classroom communities. His positive attitude and willingness to assist others have made a significant impact on his peers, as he was overwhelmingly selected by his classmates to be our class representative for the Hiram Welcoming Committee. He consistently shows respect, responsibility, and leadership, embodying the values of a good citizen and Hiram Elementary's three B's. Urielle Beltran is an exemplary candidate for this award and deserves this recognition for his outstanding contributions and character. Congratulations. This fifth grader is an amazing young lady, involved in her community. She spends her time outside of school cheerleading and completing her homework while watching her younger sister compete in gymnastics. Inside of school, she is a standout student who not only gives 150% to everything she does, she gives the same energy to every person she comes in contact with. Her enthusiasm for her future goals is truly an inspiration for her classmates and teachers alike. Lillian Baxter is an amazing person to represent fifth grade and Hiram Elementary. Congratulations.
Hey, we need a countdown. We need a countdown. We need a countdown.
What's that?
Countdown.
Three, two, one.
Hold on.
Three, two, one.
Yes, thank you.
He doesn't get it.
That may have flipped.
There you go.
Little love.
Three, two, one.
I need to try my best to picture, you know?
Let's do our students, everybody. To the first goal of the faculty and to the students, if you want to make a run for another regular time for a sitz lesson you can, or if you want to go get something to eat, it's totally up to you. We do appreciate you. Thank you so much.
All right, Cliff, we wanted to thank Stars and Strikes for their sponsorship for the gift cards for the kids. Stars and Strikes for their participation, the gift cards for the kids.
Each student is received not only their certificate from Hiram City Council, but also the Stars and Strikes donated gift cards to each student, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
I think those were terrestrials.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
He's trying to get some money. So, more, more paperwork.
She is precious.
Oh, my goodness. Her fall colors. Because my son's teacher.
She's so good.
Jesus.
Pedestrian Memorial.
I would say.
There ain't no way. Not at all.
There you go. You know, a good stuff, I'm sure. There ain't nothing you can do, you can have another 200 and some people on that roundabout.
Thanks, Cliff.
All right, for those of you who've been sleeping, we had a hurricane that came through the last few days. Fortunately, the City of Hiram escaped any significant damage. I'd like to take this time to thank our police chief and his patrol officers on the overnight shift. They stayed out there and kept us advised of everything that was going on, and everything turned out pretty well. Our city manager and myself went out Friday morning and did a damage assessment. Couple branches down, but nothing major, so the City of Hiram fared pretty well throughout the storm. Sadly, a lot of other places around the state of Georgia and North Carolina did not fare as well. Fortunately, my oldest granddaughter goes to Valdosta State, but she was able to escape and make it back here, and she doesn't know when she's going to be able to go back. Because they're going to be out of gas for a while there. Okay, next, we're going to do a public hearing. I'll read the procedures that will be followed for the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak shall raise their hand when asked. Each speaker will be recognized one at a time and should state their name and place of residence upon being recognized. The person recognized to speak will be allowed to speak on any point relevant to the application being considered. Each side will be given a maximum of 15 minutes to present their case. Speakers are encouraged to refrain from presenting information that has previously been stated by others. In no case shall either side be allowed more than the allotted times regardless of the number of speakers, unless extended by the mayor and council. A designated staff member will be responsible for keeping time. The City of Hiram will now hold a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the proposed application 2024-28-Z-COH by Grant Communities LLC to rezone 31.5 acres from B2 Highway Business District to R55 Active Adult Residential District for a proposed 117-unit active adult, single-family attached residential development. The site is located on the northeast side of Atlanta Highway, State Road Business 6, southwest side of Village Boulevard, north of Pace Road, and east of Charles Hardy Parkway, State Road 120. Access to the site is proposed from Village Boulevard. Cliff, would you please present the staff recommendations?
Mr. Mayor, recommendation, gone case 2024-8-28-Z, City of Hiram, that's case by Grant Communities LLC. Hillary requests to rezone 31.5 acres from B2 Highway Business to R2 Active Residential. I received, since the posting of the sign, I received one phone call in reference to this rezoning, and it was in favor of, and that gentleman, that gentleman was here, he's a former HOA president of subdivision. Staff recommends the denial of the rezonance based on recognition from the Paulding County Planning and Zoning Division that this development would have an adverse effect on the usability of adjacent or nearby property. However, however, excuse me, if the Hiram City Council chooses to approve the rezoning request, there are four stipulations that are recommended that any others, the council has been recommended.
Do you have those four stipulations?
Yes, sir, there. Page 6. Based on the proceeding analysis, two, uh, four stipulations. One, the only developer agrees to a 100-foot buffer along the frontage on Atlanta Highway, which is State Route 6 Business. Number two, only developer agrees, access to the development shall be determined during the planning review process. Number three, the only developer agrees to provide an updated traffic study for the overall master plan development and coordinate with Paulding County DOT on methodology and parameters of the study, initially requested per zoning case 2001-17-Z. Number four, and final, only developer shall be responsible for incorporating horizontal traffic calming practices within the development, if required by Paulding County DOT. All practices shall be approved by the Paulding County Department of Transportation, and designed in accordance with the Institute of Transportation Engineers I T E Manual for Traffic Calming.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in support of the application? You had your head up first.
My name is Tony Adams. So I live in Fort Haven. Well, we're just gonna, I thought we were gonna. Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tony Adams, and this is Linda Holland. We are two of the three owners of the property. We purchased the property 12 years ago. At that time, both of my other partners' husbands were alive. We worked together to sell the out parcels of that property. We have been approached numerous times for the remaining large piece, but unfortunately, no one in the 12 years and the five years before that had any interest in a commercial development there. We think that the 55 and older community will have very little impact on the traffic in the area. They have the liberty of being able to leave when traffic is not very high and will have a very small impact to the community, other than a positive one. We would very much appreciate your support of the rezoning.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tricia Smith. I live in Bear Chase subdivision. And, um, not opposed, not necessarily, I mean, I guess we're in favor of it. I'm the representative of, I'm the current president of the HOA. And the only, um, the only thing that we just wanted to address was the entrance into the neighborhood being considered here on the access to the sites proposed from Village Boulevard. That is. Yes, at the roundabout, yes. The roundabout area is private roads. When they built our subdivision, it was, the roads were deemed private and not public. So with that, and that's really the only entrance and exit out of the neighborhood from Charles Hardy Parkway. That's the only way to get out of the neighborhood from the crossings side. The Willows has a different area, has a different exit, but not the crossings. And that's the largest area of the neighborhood, so they all have to come out at the roundabout. So we were just wondering if there was another area that could be considered as far as entering into this new area of, I know there's like a short little driveway right off of Charles Hardy, in between the Woodstock Furniture Outlet and the Body Shop. I'm not sure who that little driveway area belongs to, if it belongs, but I know that land in front is for sale. So I don't know if that's supposed to be another entrance into that area where the new homes may possibly be. Um, but that's, you know, that's really, there was on the, I don't have a flat map, but in our subdivision, there was supposed to be, the developer was supposed to put in a separate, another entrance towards the back of the crossings, but they never did that. The space is available, but it was never put in. So that's our concern, is having another influx of people and having that main, you know, that being the roundabout being the only way in and out. But otherwise, we're all for it. Thank you.
My name is Jason Wasnasky. I am actually with Grant Communities. The applicant, Hillary Laffine, is listed out there. She's on maternity leave, so I'm hopefully pitch hitting appropriately for her. Is it Melissa? Melissa was kind enough to print a presentation, and I guess we can't get it working on the televisions tonight, but I wanted to walk briefly, just briefly through that, through a few things. First and foremost, I just kind of wanted to address who we are. So Grant Communities is a land developer company for Fisher Homes. Fisher Homes is a Cincinnati-based company formed in 1980s by Henry and Greg Fisher, who are still active in our, in our company. Henry's over 80 years old and he's very active, so maybe through, but again, we're privately owned. We expanded into Atlanta in 2013, and it was one of our nine or 10 markets now, kind of all in the east. What we are proposing is our, is our paired collection, our Wimbley. It's a single-story unit. There is an optional loft, the second floor, which is part of this application's variance request. It is, they range from about 1,250 square feet to just over, just under 2,200 square feet. Depending on if you have that loft, they're two of the three bedroom units. They are pre simple lots and sharing common wall, so ownership is of that loft itself. In the packet, you'll see we kind of have our target demographics, obviously, here. It's going to be empty nesters. And really, what we're looking for is to, for people who are refined lifestyles. They walk low maintenance. They usually have family, children in the area that they are trying to, grandchildren that they are trying to stay close to. But they have, so it's going to be relatively low impact on schools. They are much less impact on traffic, as I mentioned earlier. You've seen the site plan. It's 117 units. I'm not going to go into too much of the detail. I'm happy to answer questions afterwards, however. But it's 117 units. There do access, accesses off of the roundabout at Village Boulevard. We have an emergency access proposed off of Atlanta Highway to the south, just in case that would be necessary. Also along Atlanta Highway, and there's a cross section in there for you. We've shown, we propose a 75-foot wide buffer. I believe that's just part of our zoning. I know one of the stipulations is 100 feet, but with that cross section, again, sorry, it's not up on the screen, but what we're trying to show is that we're not accomplishing 100 feet, that can't be accomplished in 75 feet. There's plenty of buffer. I think we're going to have about an eight-foot curb in there with trees up top of that. Anywhere in the 10, 12, 14 foot range, one at a time, so you're going to have between 20 feet of streaming between Atlanta Highway and the back of the homes on development in the first place. Again, these are pre simple lots, privately owned streets and utilities, and throughout the subdivision, so again, it minimizes the impact on, in terms of the city's responsibility. There are a couple of images in here that just show, one kind of shows the streetscape of our lot, just to get an idea of what it looks like. We also have a clubhouse. We do have an amenity center planned for this site, right? As you kind of come into the, at the first intersection, as you come in, show a couple of examples of what that's going to be, clubhouse. Not expecting a pool, but this is where the CBUs, the cluster mailbox units would be located. Typically, we have things like bocce or cornball, pickleball, outdoor seating areas. And it's, again, just more of a community gathering space, and we would have one here for the residents. Our request, obviously, is to rezone from commercial to R55. This site is adjacent to the Wellstar Wellness District in this comprehensive plan that was completed in 2022 for Paulding County. We're about, just about a half mile outside what's called the Core Employment Pub Campus. And there's an area indicated on one of those maps in blue, and that is really the focus of generating commercial offices around existing Wellstar Wellness Center. But that study does not recommend any improvements on our property or any kind of special use of our property. Now, as the one seller mentioned, it's been for sale, my understanding it's been used for sale for nine years. It has not been on anywhere as a commercial site. The exhibit that I showed in there, we're talking about 31 and a half acres. That's basically replicating the Metro Mart Shopping Center that's over here, just to the north of here, which has Target, Kohl's, there's out parcels in there, there's a tourist bank in there. It's a, it's a large amount of, of commercial. And the adjacent road corridors are, carry much more traffic. They're much better commercial uses for them using. We included in here kind of a screenshot of what GDOT is showing as they're, you can see right on US 278 carries about 40,000 cars a day. Charles Hardy Parkway carries about 30,000 cars a day. Atlanta Highway carries about more than that, somewhere around 13,000. So in terms of a commercial site, commercial viability, there are far more desirable sites. And you can also see, kind of, we showed an aerial photo with some of the large retailers that are here. There are spacing on the retailers, Kroger, Walmart, Target, you know, radius, in which they're not going to locate. And again, the large. not going to locate. And again, the large site can fill with just commercial uses, and a lot of those uses are existing around there, and there are better streets for those uses. So with that, I will listen. There's some other people who'd like to speak.
You've got about 10 minutes. You've got other people who'd like to speak.
And I'm happy to answer questions at some point if everybody has to. So I thank you all for your time, and I'll step back.
Well, we have the opportunity to ask him something.
Yes, the other presenters.
Okay.
Speak their piece.
Let's clarify.
My name is Phil Hunt. I represent the Hunsband Trust. I own this property. And we, you know, we feel like if we don't get it rezoned now, you know, there's no potential for a commercial backing there. And we would just rather have it anyway. And we represent this, and we feel like we've got a company here that's going to really do good and will help the community. And it's just the right thing that we're doing at this time. We appreciate y'all and feel that see your way through the process, you know.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Brian Parsons, and I live in the Bear Chase community. I'm the former president of the HOA. The year I was president, right after I accepted the position, you all informed us that our stormwater detention center, her area, was out of code. And it was very, very much out of code. And I was a resident there. So I worked very closely with Catherine Fox to get it to code exactly as she stipulated. Took a year of my life to get it done. We got it done. Catherine came out, she approved it 100%, and I'm very proud of what was done there. Having said all that, as the president, I was looking at the plot maps just to see where it was located and all that. And there was, as Tricia has said, the current president, at Misty Court and Rick Straugh Mill Road, there was a service entrance on there, it is there on the flat map, when they were developing the townhouses where I live. And if that could be finished and opened up, if my understanding is correct, that the, being against this development is additional traffic on Village Boulevard, if you open that up, that can be opened up and however that can be done, that would have to alleviate some traffic from using that. And I'm, I'm not against having the 55-plus community built there. I think if you put businesses in there, it just, to me, it makes more sense. It'd be a lot more traffic coming and going out of there with businesses rather than residents, because just across the street from Woodstock Furniture is that 55-plus community, Brown Homes, and they all got filled in and done. And there's not, tons of traffic coming in and out of there. But again, my thing is, I love my community. I love the Bear Chase community. And there, and people have come to me and asked, what about the Misty Court entrance? Can we ever get that done? That's my appeal to you all, to the loss direction, to current board direction, as to is that a possibility? Can that be done? How can it be done? All those types of things. So.
We're not, we're not in the building business.
I understand that. But my, that's my concern for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hey, I'm Catherine. I'm a real estate agent. I represent Mr. Hunt and also Fisher. I just wanted to tell you, I went and visited Polton DMT to try to find out if there was another exit point on Atlanta Highway. And they are improving, I guess, the intersection right there with Atlanta Highway and 120, which I think you guys have seen. But as far as getting another exit point on that little strip, it would be very, very difficult, and it probably wouldn't be a left lane at all. You couldn't take a left. And so unfortunately, when the thing was developed way back with the original developer, you know, they did have that exit point, I guess, from that subdivision he's talking about. But apparently, when they did the zoning, one of the conditions was they, was that they closed it when that zoning was done. And so I just wanted to tell you, we're, we've been trying to work to try to figure out a way to make that happen. And, you know, just because the, the road coming in is one lane, and you've got the roundabout, and then it's got to come around, you've got the buses, you know, that come in and they stop, you know. And, you know, I tried to maybe think about coming another way off the haze or something like that. But you've got these 350 feet that you've got to observe from the intersection, and you've got another intersection. And so that's, I just want to let you know that we're, we're trying to solve that problem.
Thank you. Is there anyone who we, wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
My name is Doran Haynes. I'm also part of the Bear Chase community. I'm the vice president of the same HOA. The answers the gentleman gave about, about the communities about to build are, are valid points. However, once they, they build it, they're not guaranteeing that the people in it will be 55 and older, which changes the whole structure of the promise, or buildings he's about to make. There is an entrance off of Atlanta Highway now, because there's always 18 willers in that area that would help us a lot. The other thing is security. There's no, there's no talk about a larger community that has to come in through the village, village road entrance. And we see very little police presence in our, in our neighborhood. And it's important to us that as you build it up, that there's going to be a better police presence. And I'm sure the council will have, but I don't. Right now, we will see a policeman maybe once or twice a month. And we, and we're not even sure if that's enough. We have little issues in our neighborhoods. And because they say the roads are private, we, we have to take care of that security in whatever manner we can. However, we are a part of IRL, and we want to know if the police will, with this large community and another 117 homes being built, with no guarantee that all of them will be in the 55 and older category, which I'm sure most of them will be, but once they start to sell them, they're going to just sell. No one's going to say, oh, you're 55. He's saying a 55 and older. We're almost sure that it will not be. And we just want to make sure that that is addressed, that that all by the council.
Thank you. Do you have questions, counsel?
I have a couple. On the gentleman's statement, when he said that you're all saying that it's going to be a 55 plus, is that a guarantee or is it not a guarantee? Yes or no?
We were going to do restrict it to 55 and over, yes.
So there will be nobody that can move into there with children that will need to be picked up for school? 55 and older usually do not have young children?
Correct. But I don't know as to what their, I can't say that there won't be roles and responsibilities of those caretakers where a child would be picked up. I couldn't say we're going to promise that.
Okay, I understand that. But it is going to be sold as a 55 plus community?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that the effective, is Jason over here?
I'm sorry.
I do want to address one thing with our R55 zoning, I think answers the question. There is a requirement, as, as the applicant indicated, that it will be indeed restricted. But the IRL 55 requirement is that at least 80% of the occupied units must be occupied by at least one resident with age 55 or older. And that is a requirement in order to create such a category and not violate the Fair Housing Act. The Fair Housing Act has put that requirement in there. And they are required to do certain surveys and collect data and information to confirm that that is being complied with.
Okay. Thank you.
And what happens if they go out of whack? We yet to see that, but that is the requirement.
Okay, thank you. The other thing you were saying, that there's not going to be a lot of extra traffic. Well, 55 and older, which I'm part of that group, we have three vehicles. Okay? So if you just take two people that are still very active, a husband and a wife, or a partner or whatever, and they both have vehicles at 117 units, you're looking at 244 extra cars. And a lot of people at that age group are still working because they're not ready to retire. So you can't guarantee that there isn't going to be a lot of extra traffic going into that roundabout. I was real glad that you gave us.
All traffic will be going.
I was going to say, I'm glad you gave us that site plan, because it actually got to show how many other houses that also have to use that roundabout. That's one of my biggest concerns. I can tell you that right now. And you're talking about, the county is saying 100-foot buffer, and you're saying 75. If you do 100-foot buffer, how many of these 117 would you have to lose?
I don't know that we would have to lose any. We would just change the site plan.
Okay. I'm done.
Yeah, I'm sorry. In reference to the recommended stipulations, you did have a rebuttal for the 100-foot buffer. Could you repeat what you?
So we're, we're proposing a 75-foot buffer. I believe that is what is required. I believe that's what's required by code, but I believe Mr. Paul would be correct on that. And that the county was saying, go above and beyond 75 to 100. My rebuttal is that we're not going to accomplish something in, in 100 feet. 100 feet is not going to create a drastically different scenario for our residents than 75 feet. Yeah, it's 25 more feet, but the buffer that we're going to get, the screening that we're going to get, is not going to be significantly, no, I highly, highly doubt somebody would be making a buy decision saying, oh my gosh, that buffer at 75 feet is too narrow. It's just not going to change their perception of their relationship to Atlanta Highway.
And then what was your stance on the other stipulations?
Just want to make sure I'm addressing things correctly.
Thank you.
Access shall be determined during the plan review process. We don't have an issue with that. Updated traffic study, if that's something that the city would like to see, we obviously would do that. And then whatever horizontal traffic calming measures that Polton County Department of Transportation, I would say, yes, will, will, we would, we would be unmeasurable to all of us.
Okay. Thank you.
I have, don't mean to sound ignorant, but I don't know what horoz, horizontal traffic calming is.
I can't speak specifically. Usually horizontal, the things like speed bumps, like horizontal, like speed bumps are speed tables that you're going to put in to keep traffic.
And that's going to be within the community?
It's going to be per whatever Polton County's recommendation would be. So they want that somewhere else, we would have that conversation.
Bob?
No.
One thing I'd like to point out, we've had this problem with many subdivisions in Polton County. They always plan for secondary entrance/exit. And then once they get their CO, they beat feet, they never, they never do it. And it's causing a lot of problems with people getting in and out of these communities. If there's an incident in a community, there's a traffic at that one entrance and exit, and that thing is blocked up, and there's a medical emergency inside the community, you can't get any emergency vehicles in there. So I would highly recommend that you take a look at doing a second entrance or entrance.
So the only thing I would say there is, one, we do have an emergency access proposed for just that reason, that if something were to happen at the roundabout or at, at Village Boulevard, that there would be, there would be an emergency way in or out in that instance.
Is that the one off of six?
Yes.
Okay, but at the back of the property?
At the back of the property. I could show you on the plan if you'd like. The, the two access points, one, we don't need, we don't need from a community standpoint to two accesses from a sales perspective. Actually, it works better in the other direction, right? One access point that's more controlled, does not allow cut-through traffic. There's a safety concern for the residents, right, is that there are two ways in and out. Somebody can come through, grab that Amazon box off the doorstep, and out they go the other way, and they're never seen again. But if they got to come back through that, that same entrance, right, we're just, it's, it's more controlled. It's a gated access into this community, which is part of the R55 requirement. So two accesses for us are necessary, and actually, a lot of times are preferred by residents because of the safety factor.
So on your site plan, this is six. This is going to be the emergency, and it also have an arm on it?
Yes, ma'am. I think we're showing an arm to the J6 pharmacy.
It's too small.
Okay, anything else? Public area is now closed. Thank you all very much. Discussion items, discuss renewable employee benefits for 2025. Kathy?
Good evening. It's that number, and you will be ready to have an open enrollment starting October 15th for employees for our medical, dental, vision, coverage, and flexible spending, and additional life insurance if they have to purchase. We've been with GMA for our medical insurance for two years now. Price increases that you show in your packet are a lot less than what we expected for this year. They're definitely a lot less than they were the previous year with GMA, after our first renewal. But we are moving forward and taking NFP away from our.
Wait. That's, go ahead.
We are, have decided to try to take our, not only our medical, but our dental and vision with GMA instead of NFP like we've had in the past. By doing so, it will allow employees to have Anthem as far as their medical, Anthem policy for their dental and an Anthem policy for their vision. And then it will be with all of our medical dental and vision with GMA approved for us to move from the NFP, which currently our dental is with Lincoln and our vision is with Aitnet. The reduction by doing so in moving our dental is a decrease to the city. Their benefit packages for their dental is a lot less per employee coverage. The vision is 100% employee pay. It is going to have an increase to the employee for their vision coverage, but it allows us to drop it out into a four-tier instead of a two-tier plan. But it is an increase in their coverage as far as lenses and frames are available to be redone every calendar year instead of lenses one year, frames two years later. So it kind of adds to the benefit package for the employee, but it does increase their cost a little bit.
What about contact?
The contact coverage is pretty much the same, except for it is a 365 days a calendar year instead of by necessity. And they also still have, it's medical in necessity, 100% coverage. So what we're asking to recommend is as far as the benefits, allowing us to change our dental vision over the NFP based off of the quotes that they've given us that are in your packet, and then taking our current three plans that we have with medical insurance, keeping them the same, employee deductions would remain the same, and the small increase that we did occur would be absorbed in the city cost, which would be somewhat offset with the deduction of dental cost to the city.
You did mean moving from NFP to Anthem?
Correct. It's under GMA. But our medical's staying with GMA, whereas we're pressed into the dental vision, but coming from NFP. Now, NFP will continue the short-term, long-term, and the life insurance policies that are 100% paid by the city. Those will remain with NFP, and they've guaranteed that those prices that we're currently paying will not have any increase. will not have any increase at all for the next year or possibly two years. And the flexible spending that we currently offer employees that's a hundred percent paid by employees will stay brokered through NFP, but will remain with TASC as we currently have it.
A lot of moving parts.
A lot of moving parts. But we're getting a little bit more streamlined now with our medical coverage being all of GMA.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, since you're up there, how about discuss adding yard waste and brush pickups along with bulk?
I would be happy to. So we're looking at ways that we can increase our revenue with our sanitation. We're currently working on where our letters should go out to our residents as far as the residents that are non-compliant. We're gonna get that first letter out. We've already had our first meeting with our attorney as far as redoing the ordinance to allow us to go after the renters or the homeowners a little bit stricter if they're not compliant. But in the meantime, since we added this third truck, our initial plan was, when we started the sanitation, was to offer additional services to our residents. And what we have proposed in the policy that's included is a yard and waste and brush pickup on the first and third Monday of every month, and then a large item pickup on the second and fourth month. The residents will have to contact with City of Hiram first by phone, so we can go over them, what the requirements are, make sure they understand the measurements and the weight limits and stuff like that. And then they will be given the list to the drivers that will go out on Monday with the third truck and pick those items up. The only cost that we will experience is just the additional cost of the landfill when we take those items.
And they're paying for the extra services?
They will be paying for the extra service. The only services that we're doing at no charge is one to five bags of grass clippings and leaves or pine chalk, as long as it's bagged, is at no charge. The weight on that is not gonna be anything compared to some of the other houses.
Yeah, on that, one to five bags, that has to be the disposable?
Correct.
Paper bags, not plastic, correct?
Right, as listed here, all yard waste must be in bi-degradable, but paper bags, no plastic bags. And then the bundle of limbs or branches, if like that, after this weekend, if people have a bundle of branches that they could bundle up and tie, we would pick up one bundle at no charge. And then for that, nothing else would have an additional fee. As far as the large items that will be picked up on the second Monday, on the fourth Monday, those items have, we get a lot of residents that when they move in and move out, they have the boxes. Those boxes are outside of the camps on our normal pickup dates. It's hard to identify because we've already told the drivers not to pick up anything outside of a camp. So those boxes, one to five boxes broken down, will be picked up at no charge, as long as they contacted us ahead of time to let us know they had boxes out there. Six more boxes broken down, whether their item's bagged or boxed, will be just ten dollars. A lot of the residents, when they get the boxes, they try to cram them in the trash cans, then when the cans are empty, it doesn't get everything out because the boxes are stuck. So we're just trying to streamline our service to the residents as far as what we can pick up on their actual service date versus what we can pick up on this special day on Mondays. Eventually, what we would like to do is maybe have a Keep Hiram Clean Day, either twice a year or something, where we go for Paulding, Keep Paulding Beautiful, and actually have the yards cleaned up, and we would offer a free service on a certain day of picking up yard debris.
I talked with Jonathan last week, and he had mentioned that he discussed with you about the webpage that Douglas County has. Said it's got some more in-depth and detailed expressions.
We compiled a lot of recommendations based off of the City of Powder Springs, Douglasville, and a couple of others, communities similar to ours, to get the recommendations as far as pricing those, and what items are allowed, what items are not. And then talking to Jonathan, we made our decisions as far as, especially as far as the large items and stuff, what they felt comfortable picking up and what they did not feel comfortable picking up.
Is that gonna be reflected on the webpage?
Correct, we will have it updated. Everything will be updated on the website. We're expecting this to be effective November. We're gonna start trying to put it out there on our website. And then on November is our next sanitation bill, which we will put in on all the bills throughout all the residents once it's approved.
Just a time to pick up all the Christmas boxes.
Correct. We already discussed that having, you know, additional pickups that, you know, that week of Christmas, because additional people are having extra bags and stuff, so we're gonna be putting that on our website, the back trash outside of the room.
I think your fees are very reasonable. They really are.
We didn't want to go too much, but we didn't, you know, we needed to at least make sure we covered some of the expense of picking up the items.
I think that's a great service you're providing to our residents. It's a valuable service.
It was one of the items that we had on our wish list when we started sanitation, and I think we're finally getting to the point now where we've got the employees, we've got the trucks, so we have the capabilities of getting it started. And going into the new year, I think it'd be something that'd be beneficial to us, especially when we started forcing sanitation, along with getting all new neighborhoods and stuff.
Thanks, Kathy. Discuss renewal of the City of Hiram's radar permit, Chief.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Every two years, City of Hiram is required to renew its radio permit and radar permit. We're in the process of doing both. They both have to be done currently. Our radar permit is not going to change from the last few years. We have not added any streets. We've not added any new designations of places that where we can run either radar or LiDAR, LiDAR being laser speed measurement. So it's not going to change anything that we currently have in place until there is at some point an annexation of the city or other parts of the surrounding area. So this would be a discussion for you to agree if you would like to renew this radar permit and approve the mayor to sign the appropriate letter that would go to the Department of Public Safety. We have to have the process finished before December. I know we're starting early, but as you can see, things get in the way sometimes. I'm gonna have it in early and have them approve it so that we can move forward without any interruption in the speed measurement.
Discuss the acquisition of new personal protective equipment.
Councilmember Deed, do you want to introduce this?
You can. No, after we had the incident with our deputy, which didn't turn out very good, and Chief can tell you two guys that our, we had, we had our people show up and were under fire. And they showed up actually before Paulding County. And that happened, and that Monday, I came to City Hall and got Chief and Jody and sat down and said, we have to protect our first responders. And Chief went and got me the stuff, and now I'm turning it over to you because I really think that we really need this.
There are two items that we discussed as an augment. One is a replacement, the second is an augment to the current equipment that each officer has issued. The replacement item would be our bullet-resistant vest. I'm very carefully using the word bullet-resistant. There is no bulletproof vest out there. But the problem we have currently with the vest is if I order one today for an officer who's going to be starting with Hiram Police Department, we're probably looking ninety to a hundred and twenty days before I can get a vest for that officer using our current vendor. We've been tracking down a new vendor, one that we actually started using as, as councilmember approached us about this process. And actually, this is the prototype of vest that we ordered three weeks ago. This is actually the vest that will be worn by one of our officers. The reason that this is important is this vest is part of a system. This vest comes with harder plates, front and back, that can be inserted, which will stop rifle rounds. It also comes with additional carrier in case the officer wants to wear it off-duty or plainclothes assignment. And all of that at a lesser cost than what we are paying now for our current body armor, for the same and higher coverage that we will be able to provide the officers. This one is actually going to be issued out either tomorrow or Friday, depending on when the officer comes back and leave. I'll pass this around so you get an idea. This does not have the plates in it. The plates are ceramic, they're not steel. There's a reason we chose ceramic plates. Steel plates are heavy, and these vests, as you'll see, are not exactly light. With the other thirty pounds of equipment that they already carry, there's no sense burdening them with any additional plates. Ceramic are somewhat lighter, although they will only take two or three hits from a rifle. We hope by that point, common sense kicks in and we get out of the X and out of the zone where they're taking the coming rounds. But it would give the officer enough to be able to survive the initial contact. So I'll pass this around so you can get an idea of what this will feel like and look like.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah. The second part that we're looking at is a ballistic helmet. We looked at all of the different types that were available. We went for a, believe it or not, one of the lower-end ballistic helmets, but it has all the requirements that we're looking for.
Oh, that's not bad.
It has ballistic capability, bullet-resistant. It's shaped, it is a new shape that the military is using. This is a style similar to what the military is using. But it would provide probably the best protection for the officer in the event that there is an engagement that ends up with that type of cranial shot made at the officer. But I think it's also a reasonable cost of, unfortunately, reasonable in this case, is about five-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars.
Five-fifty-three-fifty.
Three-fifty. And they're under state contract, so it is something that we can get reasonably quick. So we'll bring that forward for the councilmember to finish the discussion.
I think that the investment of forty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars is very minimal compared to the life of the first responder. So all I'm asking is that you really think hard about it, but our first responders need to be protected so we don't end up going to more funerals. Could you please explain to them the night of that incident, how our people got there first?
They were there either at the same time or just immediately before the first responding officers from the county, other than the original backup units, mainly because we were so close to the city limits. It was right behind Hiram High School, which our officers are attuned to that location because we would respond there even though it's in the county in the event that if we had an active shooter situation at the high school. And they were taking up positions, they were trying to get to the deputy, but unfortunately, the suspect at that point was shooting at them also. So they were helpless to move forward without taking casualties. The first rule of our business is, you can't help anybody if you get hurt too. So we had to, they had to wait for additional assistance before they were able to move the deputy out of harm's way. And at that point, unfortunately, you owe another rest of the story.
So I just ask you guys to really consider this, to approve it. Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
And as well, come out of Pital East Sloss.
Discuss the approval and acceptance of the Small Rural Tribal Body-Worn Camera Grant, Chief.
If you remember, a few months ago, Small Rural Tribal Grant Program became available for body cameras. We put in an application for twenty-five thousand dollars to be matched by twenty-five thousand dollars from the federal government. We received an email last week that it had been approved. For that to be, for us to move forward with that, it means that the city manager or mayor will have to execute the award documents and have them returned to the group for them to issue the award notice, which will allow us to draw the money down. We will initially have to purchase those, which we will do out of Sloss funding, and then they will reimburse twenty-five thousand of the funds to our Sloss. That will give us enough body cameras for every patrol officer, not for every officer, but every uniform patrol officer that will be engaging the public. And that has been the goal of the department for this entire period, is to make sure that we have body cameras so that we can document the behavior and the interactions between our officers and the public.
What about the added cost for the storage of the videos?
That's actually going to be included in the cost of the body cameras. There is a subsequent discussion, I'll say discussion, that's a polite word, that we're having with Motorola at the moment regarding that particular issue. But the first year at least would be covered by the purchase of the cameras, and then we would look at, look the future years as we move forward.
Discuss approving the price increase of the two Chevrolet Blazers for the Hiram Police Department.
What I'm gonna ask is that first, you grant me nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents so I can go buy KFC chicken buckets so I can get rid of the curse by sacrificing it for whatever is wrong with these cars. Every time we turn around, there is some roadblocks and some issue that comes up. Because of the delay in purchasing the cars, there has been an increase in the cost of equipment. There's been an increase in the funding. Unfortunately, well, fortunately for us, on the three vehicles, which we'll talk about next, that has gone down, but on the two Blazers, which we do have, it went from ninety thousand to ninety-eight thousand for the increase in equipment. So we're trying to get that purchased out of Sloss as soon as possible so we can cut them a check, and we're done. Actually, we've already cut a check for the first year so that we can make sure that this is locked into that price. So for the two Blazers, we've gone from ninety, is right at one ninety-one thousand, to ninety-eight thousand dollars. It's just over ninety-eight, it's actually in your package. But we put a not-to-exceed number to make sure that we covered everything that was required, because it has been five days since that was put on.
All right, so we're talking about cars. Discuss making the cost approved for the council with the purchase of three Ford Explorers.
Same process, unfortunately, a much higher cost for the, for the Explorers because of the fact that the equipment is all being shipped from overseas. Almost all of the metalwork that is required in these vehicles is not produced in the United States and has to be shipped here. Shipping costs have increased because contracts weren't signed at a reasonable time. We've had increases in the financing costs and the additional cost that we had to put forward just to start the purchase of the vehicles. So in this case, we also have a not-to-exceed number that you will see tomorrow as you make your decision whether to vote or not. But by signing those contracts, we will lock in that price, and this will be the last increase on those vehicles. And again, we're going to need additional vehicles, but we will lock in a price to bring it to you with a dealer that has the vehicles on the lot at the time we go to purchase the vehicles so that we don't have the issues that we've had with these series of vehicles.
All right, you've taken up enough of our time. Cliff?
Sir?
Discuss the bids for one-fifty-O Street.
As you see in your packet, you get five, two of the goods, one is a qualified, and you know the most reasonable qualified vehicle is a hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-eleven dollars and thirty-two cents submitted by Adam Mitchell to do the scope of work that was put together with the input of whether employees and employees that sent you in the morning.
Questions?
When would they like to start this if they approve?
I told them I would be texting and calling them tomorrow nights, and they said sixty to ninety a day.
To start?
Start to finish. They'll be finished by the end of the year.
But they would be starting a couple days after you text them?
Yes, I've already scheduled a face-to-face meeting with them. It's a futuristic, hold for preference, to do a face-to-face to make sure we set starts, start against benchmarks.
Mayor, I have one question. And in this packet, why is there stuff for Hiram's Veteran Memorial in it? Since it's, there's two pages? Do you know what?
Yeah, we just wanted to go with that.
Huh? Just ignore?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just wondering because it was the same group, that's why. Okay.
All right, discuss technology installation and upgrade cost for 150 Oak Street, Cliff.
Again, I spoke to Comsec, who does all our cameras and securities here for our facilities now. And we got the cost estimates for the cameras, the securities, and the lights. Again, in your packet, $27, $2750, $415, and $2318. Those are for the cameras, the lights, and the security. The data's here, the data and the cameras is here.
Questions? Your honor, roll, Cliff. Discuss the bids for demolition of the two structures on Barnwell Street.
Barnwell Street demolition went out the bid, no response, no responses. So after that, I went out and found, someone gave us a bid for the 150 building. And told them to submit their bid, and they submitted it lower than the initial bid that we used up for our scope of work. And that's the bid that we used for the demolition of the Hiram Police Department's two buildings. Clean all the shrubbery, not take out any trees, but clear the shrubbery off of our property.
Discuss the final invoice for Red Mcduff Professional Services rendered during the Yarnell Lane project.
In your package, you see there was Red Mcduff for $43,787.40. That is the final, final bill above what you approved for the engineering for us to do the Barnwell Lane project. While they took on more, more tasks while I was out and monitoring the completion and also in the, you'll see another attachment, where they deducted a cost because of the design flaw there at Yarnell Lane and Parrish Drive, which we had to fix, but which was by additional training. So that is Johnson Lux, who are already closed out for family, does that, the contractor who we got. Red Mcduff is the engineer that we used to do the plan. And this justifying what is to be approved on Yarnell Lane will be done.
And if I might add, we came in under budget, the total construction cost by over $100,000 under what the council had approved. The overage that you're seeing for Red Mcduff's engineering and construction management services that we have, again, is not only covering the timeframe that Cliff was out and we had to augment, needed augment in time for them in order to make sure we had eyes on the project, that the council was looking at everything that was on there. It also covers the extended protracted amount of time that this whole construction project took. Because originally, it was only supposed to be a, essentially a six-month project, but ended up being almost two quarters in time. We're still under budget as a whole for what was approved, but we're over budget as it goes with the engineering services for those reasons. But as a grand total, an aggregate, we're still under budget about $100,000.
No questions?
Jody, I'm sure we have practices in place to secure us when, in the event a contractor delays. Could we do that if we move forward with the, with the Oak project? To put some stipulations in the contract so if they do go over that, they're either deducting or they're not charging us the full?
Jody can give the legal statistics, but we were on the way, as you remember, we put that out for bid. We put that out for bid, and we went with Johnson Lux, who took the project. And we were-
That was after we pulled the water portion of it out.
Out. And we were basically out there-
Mercy.
Mercy. We were at the mercy because no one else picked it up, even though we had pulled it apart. So we have, yes, Jody and I have definitely had that conversation, and that will be included in everything going forward.
Just for clarity on the matter, the process that we used to do the construction project for Yarnell Lane was using a process that's approved by the state of Georgia called the Gordian Project, Gordian Contracting, which is basically like a cafeteria plan. You needed X, Y, Z of this, and A, B, C of this, 1, 2, 3 of this, and you put it together, and that's your contract. We've used that successfully a couple of other times before, but the experience that we've had with this particular project will be a long time before I ever venture down that path ever again. The typical way that we construct a project of this nature and the contract documents that go with it are based on the unit pricing for the job and an engineer's specifications for the design of the job. And then we utilize the engineer's expertise as well as our eyes physically on it in the field to make sure that they are installing and doing what they're supposed to all along. If they are going to be late, there's going to be a calculated figure in there for the number of rain days because they would be granted rain days, assuming they receive a tenth of an inch by a known standard on the job. Anytime, you know, that it may have rained, then they're going to have a day or a day and a half for it to dry out to be able to continue doing the work. And then there are other items that were, that we put into the contract to try to ensure that the contractor is working diligently to meet the demand schedule or be there.
Thank you.
And even with that delay, I would go, also, the $100,000 that you mentioned was, was under budget. We agreed to pay the contractor, but even with all the problems.
Thank you.
Of which there were many.
Thank you, Cliff. Discuss the city of Hiram's appointment to the Paulding County Airport Authority. Jason, would you like to explain that?
Yes, council members, there was a, there was a new piece of legislation that came out last year that changed the makeup of the Paulding County Airport Authority. And pursuant to that new piece of legislation, in essence, as it stands right now, the Industrial Building Authority is on the Airport Authority plus three more members. That is changing come January 1. Come January 1, it will be five direct appointees of the Board of Commissioners. It will be a nomination from the House delegation, a nomination from the Senate delegation, both of those nominees being appointed, or being confirmed by the Board of Commissioners. And it will also be a representative of the governing authority of Hiram and a representative of the governing authority of Dallas. So this is on the agenda for y'all to select who you want to serve as that representative for the city of Hiram. That will take effect, it's got to be done-
Tonight.
Tonight. By the legislation, there was a shop block they put in there, number 30. But it's not effective until January 1.
I would like to say that I think Mayor Moran should continue to sit on the Airport Authority since he's been doing it for six years and understands everything. That's my opinion.
Well, if he wants to, that's my opinion.
Yeah, we've got a lot going on out there, and there's a lot more.
Yeah.
It's, there's a lot of construction and a lot, a lot of things going on out there.
I think that we need some continuity to keep them going. I think anybody new would be hard for them to just jump in.
What is the tenure?
Oh, it's a four-year term.
So it would always be, so we can say the mayor will continue taking on that responsibility?
Yeah, if you appoint him come January 1, he will continue for a four-year term, regardless of whether or not he's holding office as mayor.
Right.
I have a question, what prompted that House bill, that legislation, and when was the last time it was changed?
Last time it was changed was a very long time ago. I, I think that there has been, back when, you know, back 10 years ago, there was some consternation between the county and the IBA and the Airport Authority.
A lot, a lot.
Maybe that's, maybe that's what led to it.
It's kind of lively.
And so there was a desire to completely make those two entities independent of one another and not automatically having your Airport Authority with six members of the IBA. So the local delegation that separated it out came up with a new mechanism, and it should definitely, definitely put, you know, there'll be some continuity, and there'll also be a lot of fresh bases potentially on there.
Thank you.
Discuss the request from Carol Link to hold blood drives in 2025 at the events place, Melissa.
These would be in addition to the drives that the Red Cross currently holds. Carol Link was previously hosting at other locations, and those other locations aren't possible anymore. And their clinic in Dallas is too small to hold one. So they're asking for these dates, and I'll put those in the packet. They're not concreted yet, she goes in on the approval, and then the Red Cross will give her the dates of when the additional ones will be.
Questions?
Well, here it says at no charge, and I have many friends that are broad members on Carol Link, and I love the value that they bring, providing health coverage for those who are struggling financially. However, I believe consistency is important, and if we are, we just established a practice charging all nonprofits, agencies, organizations, companies that bring value to our city. We all agreed that there's going to be a nominal fee for that, which was $10 per hour with a cap of four hours. If we do this, it opens the door to being scrutinized for saying, "You get to do this," and there is no mechanism to say which one brings more value. There have been several nonprofit organizations, businesses, organizations that were offering to do free work for our citizens, our residents, our community, and we said no because we cannot do things for free because of gratuity clause. I think it's called gratuity clause? So I would love to support and allow them to use our structure, however, with the nominal fee that we set as a governing body within the last month.
Questions?
My follow-up would be if that includes the Red Cross blood drives for 2025 and also the remaining 2024. How would we do that too, if we're expected to collect that?
If they are a nonprofit, an agency, a company, an organization wanting to use our structure, it has to be consistent with what we set forth for all organizations.
I have to say that the Red Cross blood drives have been previously approved. So if that's going forward, I, that would be a vote, just like this one would be, to say that then we could start to charge the Red Cross, and then however you decide with Carol Link.
Yeah, well, if we allow X, Y, and Z at no fee, then we open that door. So just something to consider for us.
Well, the, the Red Cross, when we did them, those were all city-sponsored events. It was our staff that put them together and manned them. That's the difference.
Is that the same, is that the case now? Are we manning it?
So with Carol Link, they send two volunteers, plus the Red Cross works it. Typically, we create those as an event, so it is more of a Hiram attention getter because we attract more, I think, with the Facebook and website to say, "Come to our blood drive." We put it on the signs and things like that with visibility. So it's been a partnership because the council approved those blood drives. It's different than simply to rent the space for either a private event or a public event on their own. This is anyone, everyone, and like I said, it was a more of a partnership with Hiram.
So just play devil's advocate, if I wanted to sponsor the Girl Scouts and man that event, there would be no charge?
We're talking about a blood drive, strictly a blood drive.
Yeah, still inconsistent with our procedure.
But it's a high, it's more like a Hiram sponsored event, so I see what she's saying.
How so?
Because she just said it was big, big.
We invited them here.
So if I invite the Girl Scouts here, would it be a Hiram-sponsored event?
The council would have to approve, yes.
Yeah, so that'd be a little different, that's you as an individual, this is the city thing that they do. But she was a councilwoman inviting somebody, you see what I'm saying?
So if I'm a council member, I can initiate a partnership as long as I man it and post it on our Facebook?
It has to be approved.
It has to be approved by the council.
Okay.
That would be for you, not for them.
Okay.
You hear what she's saying?
I just feel consistency in our practices are so important.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Due to the 24-hour turnaround of the regular session, all items requiring a vote have been placed on the new business for the October 1 regular session. Is that correct?
Except for item 17.
Correct.
Yes. They have a motion on item number 17.
I make a motion to appoint Mayor Frank Moran to the Paulding County Airport Authority.
I'll second. Discussion, all in favor? opposed? Regular session tomorrow at 6:00 P.M. We'll be going into executive session, and we will adjourn the meeting from the executive session.
I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate and personnel.
I'll second that.
Second?
All in favor?
Can I make one comment? I just want to thank Doris Devi for spearheading and just taking the initiative to protect our peace officers. Thank you so very much for that.